To the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. Let's take a roll call. Mr. Dankert, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Obala.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
Posma.
Present.
Hushusta.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number one. It's a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Moving on to number two. Approving the minutes of our last meeting, April 5th, 2021.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Number, I have number three, recognitions and awards. Having none, moving on to I have number four, a motion for the consent agenda would be appreciated.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Number five, under petitions and requests, having a public hearing from May 3rd, 2021, for the Turtle Creek Two Sewer Assessments.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Second.
All. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number six is a resolution accepting a coronavirus response and relief grant for the Austin Municipal Airport. Mr. Lang?
At the last meeting, councilmember Posma brought up looking for more projects at the airport, so we got right on that and found this one.
All right, I like it.
Not quite entirely accurate, but in this case, with the new Coronavirus Response Act, they have made $13,000 available to the Austin Municipal Airport. This is very similar to the grants that we received last fall through the CARES funding. We do spend more money on maintenance and operation out at the airport than what we typically get reimbursed. And the, the extra dollars that we don't get reimbursement for come out of our, our normal tax levy. So this will, these dollars will help to offset those extra, extra tax levy dollars here for the year 2021. So we would recommend approval of the attached grant for $13,000 of additional funding for the Austin Municipal Airport.
Okay, council, any questions or comments?
Hard to say no to money.
So move the resolution.
Back in.
Say it. Okay, all in favor? I'm sorry, it's a resolution. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number seven is a resolution approving the building lease agreement with Larry Bastianson. Stephen?
Over the past many years, we have owned a building south of the airport. It was part of our airport property acquisition, and it was leased out to an adjacent property owner. That property, adjacent property owner has decided to no longer lease the building, so we were, looked for a new tenant and found Lanny Bastianson, who is actually a previous city employee. He is interested in leasing out the building for his vehicle storage, trailer storage use. We developed a, an agreement with, for the building, twenty-four, it was $200 per month rental, comes out to $2,400 per year. We looked at a three-year lease agreement with Lanny and with the details shown there, beginning May, uh, May 1st of 2021. And we would recommend approving this, this lease agreement.
And Stephen, can he sublease that out too, to friends with vehicles, or is this gotta be all his property?
He, he can sublease some with approval from the city.
No reason why I'm asking. All right, thank you. Is there a, a resolution for number seven?
So move the resolution. Second.
Thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number nine, or I'm sorry, I have number eight, is a motion saying the annual stormwater meeting for May 4th, 2021 at 4:00 p.m. Stephen?
Yes, this is just part of our yearly stormwater program to meet our requirements from the MPCA. We had requests setting this public meeting.
Okay, council, any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll take a motion for that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Uh, motion passes. Uh, resolution number nine is approving a tax increment financing development agreement. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, mayor members. Uh, this is our next step in the New Tech project. This is a approval of a redevelopment agreement. This provides more specificity to the tax increment financing district that council approved and held a public hearing on at a previous council meeting. The exhibit included as exhibit one have, have those specifications in it. This has been reviewed by Dorsey and Whitney and Baker Tilly as part of our agreement. And, um, Danita Schreier is on, uh, the Zoom call, as well as Adam Charleston, um, if there's any questions from them. Otherwise, we'd be happy to answer any ones, and we ask for approval of the agreement.
Counsel, any questions? Of our Zoom members as well, or Mr. Clark? Hearing none, looking for a resolution, uh, for the approving the tax increment financing redevelopment agreement.
So move the resolution.
A second.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to number, I have number 10 is a resolution accepting donations of the city of Austin, and, um, this agreement is so darn long, I can't pass it up to my people, I need to thank. Uh, please hold. Holy cow, it's like a McKeekan email here, trying to get through this. Lord.
Do not reply.
Here we go. Uh, thank you to Justin Ellingson for $90, the Austin Police Department, $2,500 from Belita Schindler for the Parks and Recreation Ski and Snowshoe Program, $25 donated by Dwayne and Julie Chaplin, Chaplin for the Parks and Recreation Memorial Scholarship Program, and $5,248, uh, donated from the Marcus and Park Baseball for their scoreboard. So thank you for those donations, and I will, uh, take a resolution to accept those donations.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, I have number 11 is a motion appointing An Lee to the Human Rights Commission, uh, term expiring on December 31st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. That motion passes. Uh, I have number 12 is a motion appointing Leah Culbert to the Human Rights Commission, term expiring 12/31/21.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have number 13 is a motion appointing Christopher Moore as our next honorary council member to begin May 5th, I believe, through July of 2021.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Number 14, reviewing an off-street parking appeal submitted by ISG, OBOWDS, and Austin Port Authority regarding property to be acquired and developed by the New Tech Bioscience. And I, uh, sub, 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 approve or deny parking. Holly?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, at the April 14th, 2021, meeting of the Austin Planning Commission, the Planning Commission reviewed a request, uh, to, uh, well, regulating the number of off-street parking stalls required for industrial buildings. The request was to reduce the number of stalls from, uh, the required 116 to 51, which is 65 stalls less than what's required in our ordinance. And our ordinance requires, uh, basically that we, we, uh, establish the number of stalls based on the square footage of this particular project. Um, and in this instance, there are a few reasons, uh, why, um, there might be, uh, some ability to modify that requirement. Um, there are a number of small, there are a small number of employees relative to the size of the building. There are 40 employees at this particular project. Eleven of the 51 stalls, uh, proposed will be allocated for visitor and excess parking. Uh, fewer space, parking spaces will reduce the overall cost of the project, um, and then also minimize, uh, unnecessary impervious surface to reduce stormwater collection demand. Um, and there is room for expansion if needed. The Planning Commission reviewed and, um, based on those, uh, uh, factors just listed, um, recommended that the, um, petition to, uh, accommodate, uh, the, uh, lower number of parking stalls be approved, and that was eight to zero. If you have any questions, um, I, I can follow up, and then there's also a representative from, uh, WSD here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, council, any questions or comments on the less, less parking?
Holly, I think we're kind of taking a look at some of our code right now, and I know we've had a couple of parking variances come up lately. This, I think Flats on 21st was one. Have we looked to see, or we may be a little heavy on some of our code as to what we're requiring to current standards?
Uh, we are with regard to the multifamily residential projects, um, but I think we're pretty much in line with some of our other parking requirements, such as the industrial. But in this instance, the, the project's just very different. In that there's, you know, it's a large facility, um, with just a, you know, a small number of employees. Well, I mean, a, a nice number of employees, but small compared to the size of the facility.
They all don't need eight parking spots? For a person?
If they're close to the building, maybe, I don't.
Anything else, council? Unless, otherwise looking for a motion to approve or deny the parking appeal?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Holly. Uh, I have number 15, review a lot split for Lance and Snow Pagonis. Uh, Holly, also have this one?
Yeah, this one's a little unusual for us, uh, so we've, um, started reviewing, uh, the lot splits that are within our two-mile extraterritorial area, which is actually in the county's jurisdiction. Um, we passed, uh, the extraterritorial ordinance a couple of years ago, um, and have been working to figure out how to, how to implement that with the county zoning, uh, rules still applying. Um, so we're doing this parallel review, um, and, uh, in this instance, the Pagonises have a larger parcel, which I believe they've already sold. Um, and they are, want to carve a smaller parcel out of that, um, existing, uh, uh, area. And, uh, there's a survey included that shows, uh, how that will look. Um, the, uh, the purpose for reviewing these, uh, minor subdivisions in the county or within that two-mile area is to mitigate potential issues that we could see, uh, maybe now that would be, uh, a problem if the area was annexed in the, in the future. Um, so Pagonis is currently in the process of obtaining a zoning permit from the county. Um, they had to go through quite a bit of review, um, through the county and, um, had just recently gotten a conditional use permit for the project. No concerns were noted by city or Austin utility staff with regards to this lot split, um, and it is, uh, and the county is not objecting either. Do you have any questions about?
Just out of curiosity, so the original lot, does it like a U shape around this?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, maybe they don't want, maybe the, yeah, maybe the, the woods or the area along the river was, you know, more of interest to the people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Yep.
Okay, looking for, if there are no more comments or questions, looking for a resolution to approve or deny the lot split, probably number 15.
So moved to approve.
Resolution to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number 16 is granting the planning and zoning department the power in contract, uh, to contract for removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. 16A is 502nd Street Southeast, the Foon Property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Carry 16B is 707 Sixth Ave Southwest, the Batikari Property.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carries. 16C, 1104 11th Ave Southwest, the Jones Property.
So move.
Second.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. 16D, 401 9th Street Southwest, the Sanchez Property, in motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carries. Uh, under bids and awards, I have number 17, looking for a resolution, receiving bids for Shirley Field Park tile installation. Stephen?
This is a project where we will install about 5,600 feet of drainage tile to help the, the park dry out faster in the spring. Um, this is a project that we've looked at, uh, because, to allow for better use of the facility. Park and Rec has trouble scheduling events there for soccer and baseball at this time, just because of the unknowns related to the condition of the field. So, uh, we believe this tiling project will help, uh, dry out the facility and allow for better use, uh, through our parks department. So we took bids on the project. Hodgman Drainage was the low bidder at $58,358.75. And we have received, um, uh, Hormel Foundation grant for this project. Last fall, this was, uh, part of our request from Hormel Foundation, so that, that will fund this project, and we'd recommend awarding this bid to Hodgman Drainage Company.
All right. Thank you to the Hormel Foundation for this gift. Uh, is there a resolution for 17 to award the bid?
So move the resolution.
Second.
Jason, thank you. Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. I have number 18, receiving bids for 18th Avenue Northwest Meeting Improvements. Uh, Stephen?
Another project where we've worked with the Park and Rec Department to try to come up with a solution here, uh, back in early 2000s when 18th Avenue was developed with the center medians, it was looked at to try to provide some, some greenery and plantings out there in those center medians that were wide enough to, at that time, we thought, um, working with, and architects, that would, um, facilitate plant life. And it was the city's responsibility then to maintain those plantings over time through the Park and Rec Department. But the harsh conditions out there, the salt environment, all of the heat coming off the pavement has made it very difficult for the Park and Rec to, to maintain and keep those plantings in good condition. So, um, we developed a project where we would remove the plantings in the center medians, the rock landscaping, and replace it with concrete. We did look at a couple alternates for the concrete, one being just plain, um, regular sidewalk-style concrete, and the other, all, bit, alternate number two being a red stamped concrete that is, uh, currently in some locations on 18th Avenue. You can see there, um, the bids are, are quite different, uh, with alternate number one being about $35,000 for the regular concrete, and alternate number two being $66,000, so a considerable amount more, uh, nearly double when, when looking at the red concrete brick pattern. So it would be our recommendation to award this work to Doyle Connor Company with a base bid of $25,275, $257.50, along with alternate number one, which would be the standard concrete to be placed in the medians for an additional $34,920, bringing the total cost, uh, to $60,177.50 that we'd recommend awarding to Doyle Connor. Funds for this project would come from our state aid account.
Okay, council, anything for Mr. Lang? Uh, if not, I'll entertain a, awarding the bid.
So I'll move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Joyce, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number 19 is a resolution, uh, to receive bids for 18th Avenue slash Place Northwest and 8th Avenue Southwest, Millen Overlay. Stephen?
Yes, this is our Millen Overlay project for 2021, along with some storm store and tiling improvements. We had one bidder on the project, total bid $207,881.20. We'd recommend awarding this project to Yuland Brothers with funds coming from our capital improvement fund and also our stormwater fund, and assessments as well.
Okay, council, anything? Otherwise looking for a motion for number 19A?
So move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. And the addition to the agenda, 19A is a resolution approving the flood acquisition of 1206 12th Drive Southwest. Stephen, anything to say about that?
Yeah, um, first, I would just like to say thanks for putting this item here instead of adding it at the very end after your closed meeting.
I'm your guy. I'm your guy.
Yeah, thank you. But with that, um, this is a property that we, has been identified for a flood acquisition, um, for quite some time. It was identified as part of a funding project in 2013, but we were not able to come to an agreement for the acquisition of this property at 1206 12th Drive Southwest. It's a former Wally Busstead property on 12th Street Southwest. And, um, now that, uh, things have changed, use of the property for the owners is, is looked at differently. They were interested in revisiting acquisition. Um, again, we have, we have looked at it many times for flood purposes. Also, our planning and zoning department has been involved with this property many times, so we feel that, um, acquiring this property has many benefits, both for flood acquisition and just to the overall neighborhood. So to start the process, we, uh, completed a, an appraisal of the property, and that appraisal came back at $78,000, which is much more than it had been previously, just another example of the housing market and how, uh, housing prices are increasing. I think back in, uh, 2015, it was around $45,000 to $50,000 for the property. We, in addition to the acquisition of $78,000, we would, uh, anticipate some abatement costs for the, for the home, and also then demolition costs for the home, two garages that are on the site, and also a shed. Bringing a total cost of the overall project to $105,000. We currently don't have any DNR grant funding that would, uh, go toward this project, so we would recommend in order to help move, to move the project forward using local option sales tax. Um, this, this, as you see in your backup material, is a little bit unique where the, the home structure is not located within the floodplain. That is our number one criteria that we utilize before purchasing a property, is making sure that it's within the floodplain. But we did also establish other criteria along with that. Uh, I think we had about four criteria that we utilized, and one of those was the ability to eliminate infrastructure by purchasing a home or, or property. And we are able to do that. We're able to eliminate a sanitary sewer connection that has a potential to take on water during a flooding event or groundwater event, and we also have the opportunity to eliminate some roadway infrastructure by elimination of this property. So lots of different things, lots of different benefits here, and we would recommend, um, council developing a budget for this project, and then authorizing the mayor to execute the purchase agreement of $78,000 for this property.
Counsel, any comments? Stephen, I think you touched on it, but the question I was gonna have was 12th Drive Southwest, does that mean we could sort of, basically, abdicate that road, you know, no longer have to maintain it? Is that the idea here?
We can get rid of about half of the road. We'll need to maintain it up to the driveway to, uh, Comfort Care, but for the most part, we'll be able to get rid of about half of that roadway. Right now, it's currently a dead end. A good bit of riffraff, I think, occurs there on the dead end, so it'll help to be able to get rid of that.
Sacred heart. Sacred heart, not Comfort Care, but.
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Someday you'll be there, you'll know the name then.
Correct.
All right, um, so council looking for a resolution in 19A?
So move the resolution.
Second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. And before we go into close session, Mr. Troy Jean is here. Uh, Tim, you can step to the microphone, please. He met with, uh, Chief McKeekan today. Tim is passionate about medical marijuana. Uh, we've negotiated a four-minute presentation here for the council to hear. I don't know that this is necessarily the body, but we're certainly interested in hearing Tim, uh, go ahead and present.
Thank, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I'm here today to, uh, talk about the medical need for cannabis extract. I know there's votes coming up for the recreational use, and, you know, it's working its way through the legislature. But as of right now, we have a legal medical product that is only available through a very few sources. And it's at a price that is five to seven times what the price is at another legal store out of state. And the people that, most of the people, friends, neighbors, other constituents, a lot of them are in a, uh, medical condition that prevents them from jumping through all the hoops to go pay seven times as much for a medical product that the doctors have already approved. And the state insurance had covered it for many, many years, and all of a sudden, uh, they stopped with no explanation. So now the people, um, are graciously allowed to pay for that themselves, and if they were to buy it through the, say, the Mayo Clinic Pharmacy, they would have to pay $1,700 for a product that only cost $85. And, uh, if there was a way to create some sort of moratorium about villainizing and victimizing these people until their needs are met, any help would be appreciated. Any comments or questions? I have a large group of people who have been affected positively by the medical, uh, situation here. And I know the, the recreational thing, it's, um, it's just kind of disheartening to me that there's a lot of discussion about what's going to be done with the proceeds that are made from the people who sell the recreational, and, and there's gonna be taxes and fees and all this, and everybody's excited on what they're gonna do with the money, but they're kind of overlooking the medical people who have a real immediate need.
And, Tim, I can feel your passion, and I, I know this is a, a very high priority of yours. I, I don't know if you've spoken with Senator Dornick and Representative Mueller, you know, that seems, seems to be where the, where that, your advocacy needs to, needs to rest, is with them, because that's the body that can really make that change you're looking for.
I just speak out where I can. I always learn to.
Okay.
Think globally and act locally, and any help that I could get from our local.
Chief, you got anything to add?
I've known Tim a long time, and I enjoy the discussions that we have, and we had an opportunity to, to meet today, and I think, you know, Tim's asking for some sort of local moratorium. Uh, I did advise him that that would not be something that, uh, I would be interested in. And, and the explanation is, I am empowered by the state of Minnesota. I think if we look at alcohol, that is a substance that we can all appreciate. Uh, we know it is, it is sold. Uh, but we know it has intoxicating pro, uh, properties, and it is something that's controlled. In 1933, when the 21st Amendment appealed prohibition, states were given the power to regulate alcohol. Dry states were allowed to remain dry. Other states were allowed to determine how they would regulate alcohol. Dry states were allowed to remain dry. Other states were allowed to determine how they would regulate alcohol. Each state adopted a similar uh three-tiered system, producer, wholesaler, retailer, ultimately the customer. And, and each state has its own quirks within that particular system. Tatterstall Distillery, Lift Bridge are leaving the state because they're exceeding the microbrew, micro distillery exceptions given to having retail stores. If I have a particular bottle of Scotch, I would be interested in ordering. I can't do it because Minnesota is a state that doesn't allow you to legally ship to your home. Uh, some states are still partially dry, there are dry counties, but really it comes down to while I appreciate what other states are doing as they make a determination in how to regulate marijuana, Minnesota does get to chart its own course. Currently, our legislature has not left the historical way that we regulate marijuana. They, they've had opportunities, they haven't done so. I don't know if they will do so in this session. I get a sense that they will not. Minnesota has visited medical marijuana, I believe it was eight to ten years ago, and they decided on a particular way forward uh as, as our representatives and leaders, and I think we should honor that. Three years ago, there was a state commission that revisited how they want to address uh certain drug crimes. Many ones that were felonies became gross misdemeanors. And as much as I appreciate Tim's passion and I appreciate what other states are doing, that's not what Minnesota is choosing to chart a course with right now. And, and I know even for us in, in town, we have some power given to us, you know, in alcohol, there's a reason why, you know, some on council four years ago, you know, we looked at having some convenience stores do three-two. We didn't go that route, but um, you know, you can go to Quick Trip in Plainview and, and they go that route. Other cities have municipal liquor stores, but really, I, you know, my advice is we would follow the current law and legislation as we enforce the law because that is what our representatives have put into law, knowing what the counterarguments are. If they should change, we would certainly follow their direction. And I think a- as a locality, when they take a look at, and, and, and they might never change, they might change ten years from, I, I just don't know. But when they make those change, we should take a look at that point in time. Do they extend to us as a locality any ability to impact either restrict or, or or, or be more um loose in how we, how we handle marijuana at our level, but we're, we're not at that point. We don't have that structure, and as I explained to Tim, uh, our department would certainly continue to follow what Minnesota law uh prescribes for marijuana, and in most cases of small possession, it's going to be a petty misdemeanor. I know that some marijuana products, when they are enhanced or, 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 or taken out of the product themselves, that can be considered a felony. Uh, that is something that is under Minnesota law, and I think when we forward cases for review, uh, it is up to our prosecuting attorney, the county attorney, to take a look at what elements exist with, within that case. And ultimately in our justice system as well, our judicial, our judges get an opportunity to have a third-party look at the, at the specifics within that case and decide if there's something within there that necessitates a, a different approach or a different sentence at the end.
Thank you, Chief McKeegan, and thank you, Tim.
One response is that I think it should be known that the people that are able to purchase the product here in the state, they have um only so much finances and for them to be able to purchase as he's, you know, maybe it's been uh lowered in what the penalties are, but for anyone to get a medical quality product like what you would buy at a medical store in Minnesota from an out-of-state medical place by merely having that product is a felony. It's not a gross misdemeanor, it's a felony. And it villainizes victims who can have no choice but to pay what they can afford and I just comes to mind is Paul Wellstone, and he did, did that for a lot of elderly people, took them on a bus, took them where they could buy their medicine cheap and then brought them back. Didn't happen to be cannabis product for all that I know of, but I don't see that there's any difference when it's what the doctor thinks that a patient should have and this is what a person needs and they don't have a choice.
Thank you for your comments, Tim. I appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thanks.
Thank you.
And just in, maybe a, a option for Teresa Lugo, it's her last meeting today, and so Teresa's on Zoom. Just to give her the option to have any closing comments she might have now, or else we'll close the meeting and she can come back to the work session and give them, or after the close. I just want to give her the option. Teresa, do you wanna uh stay on or give uh closing comments now?
Sure, I can um give my comments now. I just want to thank you councilmembers and your honor for giving me the opportunity to be part of this. I really enjoyed it and I really learned a lot more from, you know, your aspect about the city of Austin, and I hope in the future I could, you know, do more than be part of the council member and, you know, do something with you guys. I enjoyed it.
We look forward to that, and I, I heard comments, Teresa, that you, you went kind of above and beyond and visited with department heads and, and got a little more information, so I appreciate you doing that, and I know they did as well. So, thank you for your commitment and your time, and uh we do look forward to having you serve in some capacity in the city down the road.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
All right, now we will uh close the session uh for item number, a motion for number twenty, uh pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three, parentheses C, to develop or consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase of sale or real or personal property, the property to be considered.